Mrs. Callahan, regarding our budget proposal and she wanted an opportunity to sit with us, talk to us a little bit about the actualities of the town's finances and have her team kind of make a presentation to us. We did talk about the fact that there's no expectation of a vote tonight by the school committee or finalizing a number or anything like that, but that we were going to present kind of what we thought the schools' needs were. We were going to present where you thought the town was at, so we can make an informed decision later down.
Yeah, and I appreciate it Cory, if I can. I think it arose out of some of the earlier discussions I had with the superintendent. I think what we really wanted to make sure of is that we're going to try to be all on the same page. I think for Katie and I, ever since we've come here to manage the town, we recognized from very early start that the way that the relationship between the schools and the town needed to be improved. And we did have some preliminary discussions with the then-school committee. It's changed a lot, new people everywhere, just like it happens on the Board of Selectment. But we had made a commitment to take a really, you know, hard look at the budget, looking at the way that the budget was formulated and put together, and how we would actually put together a balanced proposal and try to bring equity not just to the school department, but to all departments, which actually had, I think, suffered from capacity issues for staffing for a long time. Having said that, we definitely have moved the needle amazingly since fiscal year 2018, and the data shows that, that we have spent more money. And that's not what we want to come here to discuss tonight about, or challenge, anything that the school district thinks that it needs. I'd like to review the entire budgetary process, because we have new people here. And, you know, municipal finance is different than private sector finances, and it's even also different than what can occur in the school district. And Mike had said to me that you were already preliminarily putting some ideas together, obviously, because he meets with the principals, just like I meet with departments. And so when we got together, the one concern that I said is maybe that this year, we probably should do a refresher, we have new people. And he did say that, you know, this board will make that decision. But every department head makes that decision. And the way that the charter and the bylaws, you know, through public financing funnel all that up to the town manager. So every department makes these decisions based not on the other side of the revenue picture. And that's what we have to do, so that no matter what comes in, everyone has their wish list, we try to do that, we have to balance the budget, it's a fiduciary responsibility. If we can't do that, or if we have an unbalanced budget that we can't reconcile before June 30th of every year, that can have significant consequences for school district. The municipality is terrible financially. It sends a terrible message, I would not only to the taxpayers, but to those people trying to recruit and new school choice, or any number of things. So we wanted to avoid that, and I think the best way is just to kind of refresh where we are on the financial side. When Mike and I met, the downedness budget wasn't even out. We know what our major requirements are with Proposition 2 and 1/2, and so we traditionally come out very, very conservative, because we have to, because we never know, you know, whether it's a pandemic that hits us and all of a sudden they tell you, don't even think about getting any additional money from the state, or whether it's any other thing. So a refresher, I think, for looking at the financials on our side. This is what we have to do. So what the school district does, they only have one other step, because normally it's the department head that meets with the manager. And the one step is the school board looks at that in totality, what the school administrator is looking at, and then either ratifies it or modifies it, and then puts it forward. So then it sits in all the different pockets that we have for government department heads, and then we have to figure out, okay, for public safety, you know, what are we going to do? For the school district, what are we going to do? And the only way to do that is, we have to look at what money we really have in our coffers, and how that will affect the next year and the year after. So I thought today would be a good day, even though we talked finances quite a while ago with the school committee, it's changed. And I just thought it would be really healthy to do that before the school committee makes its recommendation, and even when it makes its recommendation, so that everyone's clear what the other process steps will be, and how the finance committee will look at the proposed budget. Not what we all want, but what the proposed budget will be, because that's the way it's laid out, because at the end of the day, we have to have that balance. And if we don't have the balance, then we can't move forward in the way that we're required to by Department of Revenue and everything else. So I thought it would be great if Katie can talk about where we are right now. You have to remember, we're still waiting on a lot of figures to come in.
Yeah.
And maybe articulate some of the concerns we have about sustainability in all our departments, and how we're going to go forward. Because if we don't have that discussion now, you know, we could find ourselves back in 2016, '17 really quick, without any, you know, consolation that it's a big change to be above net school spending. It's a big change to be able to fund the way we do for capital. I want to be able to sustain all of that. We know that, you know, public education is extremely important. I served on a school committee, as well as a Board of Selectmen. So I get it, and I understand the process that's involved on your side. I just want to make sure that when we look at the totality of how to balance the budget, we're taking into consider all the process steps. So if we can, you're the chair, maybe to recognize what would be helpful for being able to hear from both Katie, myself, and Justin.
Yeah, absolutely. Before we do that, I just want to have everybody introduce themselves. We've got some new members on the board, we've got some other players here in the house with us tonight. So obviously I'm Cory, we're the community chair, Dave Conarchioli, school committee vice chair.
Justin Madu, assistant town manager.
Todd Bronck, school board.
Matt Bowler, business manager.
Maria Falewski, school committee.
Almaya Gartham, school committee secretary.
Jen Callahan, town manager.
Katie McKenna, finance director.
Mike Lucas, superintendent. And I have two guests over here. Tara Traynor is our curriculum director, and Kristin, sorry.
Kristin Miller.
Kristin Miller is our specialized director of students services. Where's Minnie Ash? And Hallen's over there as well, keeps us organized in the way.
Who cares?
And Mr. Pink, I mean, prior to the meeting, that he would be recording the meeting tonight, so that's why we're very busy also. Because I just want to kind of talk a little bit about what Jen said, just a couple of words. And again, I don't think you would target it in the school department, but I would like to clarify. A wish list is something that we don't look for, and I know you were saying it kind of lightly, like people want their wish list, people have their wish list. We go for a budget of what we need, okay?
And maybe it was a wrong choice of word.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify. No, I know exactly what you're saying. Every department has a wish list. I just wanted to be clear that when we propose a budget, it's not a wish list, it's what we need. And I know you said something about the fact that, you know, what we all want, yeah, I mean, we want a lot more than what we propose in this, it's what we need. So I just wanted to kind of clarify what you said, but I just wanted to at least get the...
And I think you have a very strong, you know, need focus, and we have somebody who is, actually, you have four members on your board that all have backgrounds in public education. And I think that's great to have on a board, but it also, it comes with that understanding that you may have, you know, intricate ideas about things, but that's no different than a, you know, a police chief, or a fire chief, or a assessor, or any number of things. Because even though we all have needs, we still have limited funds in which we can do it. And so, trust me when I tell you, it is a very difficult job to say not only no, but not maybe this year, you know, because I don't like to say no. We have said that we can do certain things in certain years, but with the hope that the next year we build enough capacity to do that. But again, we are constrained, and it is something that we have to consider with every time we balance the budget. And so, poor choice of word, but I wouldn't, I've taken offense to it.
Yeah, no, and I didn't want to like pick on that, I just wanted to be clear. And again, I think to what you're saying, we all have a background and knowledge. I know I've been dealing with budgets for a long time at a principal level. But I think what we're bringing forward is, we're bringing forward what we need, and we know, we understand the constraints that the town has, we understand that sometimes you're held hostage by based on what's going to happen through the state and what monies you're getting. We understand that, we totally understand that. But we were elected to advocate for what's in the best interest of kids. I think that's what we do each and every time, and I think, you know, I appreciate this conversation, this is great that it's happening, and I want to thank the chair, and I want to thank you for having me. And so I certainly look forward to hearing how all of this plays out.
Yeah.
Turn it over to Katie.
Okay, so we start with the, the first slide is the budget first slide, and it's fiscal 25 revenue budget, this is what we see at town meeting. And, you know, the numbers sometimes change as we get different iterations of the state chair sheet aid. But we start out with the tax levy, which is from the prior, the prior year, after we set the tax rate, we have that figure finalized. So from there, we do this 2 and 1/2 percent. I'm going to go through each one of these as we go forward in different slides. But I kind of wanted to point out, we've got the three buckets of taxation, the state aid, and local revenue. So those are from the three buckets. We have also offset expenses, which we'll go into as well. And I want to also show fiscal 24 to fiscal 25, there's a few changes. So the new growth, we have been, all along, going with a $225,000 figure. Last year, I was hopeful, we were hopeful, we put up to $300,000. Unfortunately, it came in at 286. So we're going back down to the conservative estimate, and I have a slide on the new growth, so I'll get to that a little bit more as well. And we have the debt exclusion that's within the taxation, and that kind of varies slightly from year to year. There's also a quick slide on that. And we'll go through the historical state aid figures and the local receipts. There's a slide for that too, I'll go into that a little bit as well. And that brings us to the total revenue, we add up all those figures. Then we take away non-appropriate expenses. These are expenses that don't need to be voted by town meeting, that's what non-appropriate means, doesn't have to be voted. So allowance for abatements and exemptions, that's our overlay account, it was noticed in 74, 777. Now that's not what went on our budget book at town meeting, but due to the change at town meeting, this is the figure that had to be reduced to balance of a budget. I do want to point out, and there's a slide we'll go through on this as well, that we needed 243,060 according to the state, based on our usage. So we're going back up to 250 for that, for fiscal 25. And I just want to say some of this, you know, we were able to, last year, on the floor, be able to absorb some excess levy capacity, some amount in this allowance and abatements line, and, you know, move forward with a balanced budget anyway. But we don't have any capacity going forward, we've kind of chewed all, we chewed into all of that. So now we're starting from scratch again. And some years to year, you know, we build capacity, and, you know, if we have a good new growth year, which I can go into that as well, those are anomalies, and then that will help us in the following year. So this is a year where we're kind of a little lean to start out with. So the next slide, the proposition 25.
Okay, one second.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Last question, so you go through, babe.
So could I just ask, so for the allowance, for the abatements and exceptions, the overlay, where does that, so we appropriate, or you appropriate a certain dollar figure each year?
Yeah, I'm going to go through, there's a slide on that, so I'll explain it a little bit more. And if you have further questions, I can definitely answer them, you know. No problem. The proposition 2 and 1/2 revenues, this is just a little bit from, everything we do with the budget is going to go forward to set the tax rate. So we vote the budget in May, it's effective in July, October, November, we're going to set the tax rate. So we're kind of being, you know, we're looking into the future a little bit, knowing that we have to do certain things in order to be able to set the tax rate. Because if we don't set the tax rate, then we're not going to collect taxes, and it'll make a whole lot of trouble for the town. So we have to get it right in May for the fall. So this is just how the tax rate gets calculated, so this is how I would expect it to look come the, you know, October, November of this year, fiscal 25, but calendar year 24. Where we'll start off with that fiscal 24 levy limit, which is what was the final figure at the setting of the tax rate. And then you add the 2 and 1/2 percent, you get the 703, 376. Those two numbers should stay exactly the same, new growth. I mean, we're always hopeful that it'll come in more than that, but that gets added there to get your subtotal, so that's your fiscal 25 subtotal, or your levy. And then you go forward to get your maximum allowable levy by adding in any debt exclusions or capital exclusions, overrides, and that gives you your maximum allowable levy, which is what goes into setting the tax rate. So that's just a little primer, you know, this, it's kind of boring, but the 2 and 1/2 percent and the new growth that I want to focus on in the next slide. So new growth are kind of our, let's say guaranteed, I mean, right now by statute, they're guaranteed. So if we just look at the historical new growth figures, we'll see that came in, as I mentioned, fiscal 24 at 286,000. There are a couple of years that are anomalies there, 541,646, and those are years where they go out and they're doing some recertification, and usually it's a personal property that brings a little extra money those years. But we can't look at those years and expect that the average factors in those years is something that we can budget for, because like last year, 300,000 didn't work out for us. So we want to be conservative here. So if we take a conservative approach for fiscal 25, and we've got proposition 2 and 1/2 increase of 703,376 dollars, and 225,000 estimated new growth, so pretty much our base of what we're going to look, where we can increase budgets is about 928,000. And then of course, anything, any state aid on top of that is helpful. But as we'll see, state aid has been somewhat flat over the years, so.
What I don't, so we estimate 225,000 for new growth, that is, you know, 30, 40,000, 25,000 less than it's been at its lowest ever. Why do we, why are we so pessimistic?
We have, well, we have to be conservative. The Department of Revenue is going, we're going to set the tax rate with them. So when we're setting the budget, we have to account for any other variations that could happen along the way. So let's say right now, we're looking at the governor's figures for the state aid, and let's say a future iteration comes in with less money, we need to have something, somewhere to be able to go in and set the tax rate later. Because the budget is balanced now, but as some things change, we have to have a little bit of flexibility there. And if it comes in over, what it's going to do is it's going to come back next year as in your beginning figure. So that 28 million that we're beginning with this year will go up by that difference. So you're going to, it'll be in next year's starting figure for the taxation.
Katie, can I just clarify one more thing for me?
Sure.
That last number you said, the 928, 376, can you say that's the total amount you have to increase budgets?
That'll be the, that's where we start with, yes, exactly. That's what we're, when we start our budgeting, that's going to be the figure that we're going to for the whole town, between the school and all of the other departments, we're going to try to be conservative around that figure. Because this is the one we can guarantee, you know, especially if there's, if we come into a downturn, then we can't even guarantee that, because, you know, certain aid could be reduced. So luckily, we don't have that right now, but when we're in a normal year, this is what we're going to start with in our budget process.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So Katie, does this include other funds and, like, other type of free cash, things to that effect?
No, so free cash, free cash is not something you want to put into the budget. It is for one-time expenses, so that goes into our capital budget. So that's not part of this at all. I mean, there are factors in here that can help create free cash later, but that really helps us on our capital side of things. So free cash doesn't go in the budget. Other funds, if I go back to page one, I did skip over that, because it's not, it's not helpful necessarily for discussion, but it doesn't mean I yet mentioned it. Under local revenue, there are other funding sources to be appropriated. And this is very similar to, in your own budgets, how you have other funds that you use to other parts of your budget. In the past, we used to go through the budget, and we would put a hold on certain items and, you know, certain budgets, and then we would have a funding source come in. So this is just going, that's what those are, so like 825,000, 800,000 of that is anticipated to be ambulance receipts, so that goes specific.
I don't know where you're looking at.
I'm sorry, this is page one, back to the budget book page.
Sorry.
Nope, no problem. So under local revenue, under the fiscal 25 column, there's other funding sources to be appropriated, 825,000. So 800,000, that is ambulance receipts, so that directly offsets the fire EMS budget. And then there's 25,000. Now, these figures could change, because I have to do an analysis in the ambulance fund to make sure the appropriate amount, based on receipts, that we can use towards their budget. But those will then go into the, when we make the motion, we'll have these funds that offset our budget.
Are there other funds, like, besides school choice, money, and things to that effect? Like, I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, unless they're written in here, the unrestricted government aid, or I'm looking up there, the law effect, it's down there.
Yeah, yeah, so that's under the state aid, yeah, the, all of that state aid is kind of one bucket. So other, any other funds have specific purpose under statute and are not considered in here. But the ones that are, I've mentioned. I'm going to go to the debt exclusion slide, this is just a real quick one, I just wanted to show, this is, this is, there's a lot of numbers on this page, I know it's a bit busy. This is just a, our budgetary debt schedule that we use for developing our debt budget. And there are just two items right now that are under this debt exclusion, that $496,000 figure that is part of our taxation figure, and that's the police station and the middle school room. We know that there's a new debt exclusion that will come on, but that's probably several years out before we see that as a part of this figure. And then this, these particular items that go for the debt exclusion, so they're added to our taxation, but they're also on the town side of the budget. So they're budgeted within this whole debt schedule. So, I mean, if you wanted to take a look into this or, you know, get more information, I'd be happy to go over it, but, you know, there's, general fund has budget, debt that's budgeted to them, sewer fund and water fund, so all of this debt has a spot to go, but it's all, either if not on the general fund, it's in the sewer and water. So effectively, that exclusion is an offset to the debt budget. Going for state aid, this breaks it all down to, tell me now, to your point, this is going to show our, this is important to note, that fiscal 20 through fiscal 23 are the actual, so that is what we receive. So even as we get different iterations of the state budget, there are, well, the aid one, that can change, but on the next slide, the state charges can change. So when I say actual, this isn't the budgeted figures that we budget as we start the process, these are the ones that we actually received. And that matters most for the, like I said, the charges, because even as they list the charges in the last iteration of the state budget, those charges still often will come in different than they were even promised. So sometimes more, sometimes less, you never know which way it's going to go. So just noting that these are actual figures, you can kind of see that the state aid itself was pretty level all the way through the current budget that we're in. I mean, it kind of goes up a little bit, it comes down a little bit, it's, but it's been pretty level, level. And that's where, I mentioned previously, that we tend to look at it pretty level as we go into the budget process, because that's historically how it is. So that is, to go into the state charges slide, it's similar. We have a lot of charges, and within the exception of the current budget year that we're in, the actual charges have been pretty level as well. They're, you know, right around, you know, 1,100, so. And that essentially comes, that comes off of the revenues directly. I mean, as we receive the money, they take it away. So when we record it, we record it as a revenue, but we also record it as an expenditure offset. They're both in our, the next slide is just kind of showing you how the state aid, other than the, was not shown, is that there's an MSBA offset that came off, so that kind of made fiscal 24 take a big dip when that went away. And then this year, we have an anomaly year with state aid, so it's just kind of showing it's level, and then there's a dip, an upswing. So we try to keep it level, because we can't expect that those dips and upswings are going to be an anomaly year. Next slide, so I was going to cite in the local estimated receipts. This is the local money that comes into the town, motor vehicle excise tax, that's one of our most reliable local estimated receipts.
Yes, go ahead.
The meals excise, cannabis excise, and I want to note on the cannabis excise line that it was going really strong for fiscal 21 actual, almost 300,000. Now we're down to budgeting 150,000, and I'm not certain we're going to make it. So that has definitely seen, that's the excise piece of it. And we're going to get down to the impact fee. You'll see that these are, again, actual fees, that there was an impact fee for a few years. However, those were never budgeted into the local receipts. These are just the actual figures, they were never budgeted, because the state had mentioned that those were going to go away. So we couldn't count on them as a revenue source going forward. And they have gone away, we don't even, we didn't have any fiscal 23 actual cannabis impact fees. There's a couple other that has gone up and down, investment income, Medicaid reimbursement, and then our miscellaneous non-recurring, those kind of go up and down. We can't budget for miscellaneous non-recurring, because by its nature, it's non-recurring. And we do have to be very conservative with our estimates in these local receipts, because this all, again, gets reported as we are going into our recap process, setting the tax rate. And anything over a certain percentage of the prior year, they want explanations, that they being the state. So everything has to be conservative, or they will question it, and they will, they have actually had me reduce the cannabis excise tax one year, because they could see the receipts coming in on the state side, and said, no, your budget's too high. So the state highly regulates this stuff, so.
Katie, describe miscellaneous recurring again.
Miscellaneous recurring is, miscellaneous, well, recurring is generally inventory. So we usually budget a low amount, we don't know how much inventory we'll sell during the year. But miscellaneous non-recurring is, miscellaneous not, we don't expect it to happen each year, so it could be...
Where is that issue?
Well, it says recurring, it's cut off.
Oh, that's the miscellaneous.
Yeah, I apologize. So I made a note for myself that that's, the miscellaneous non-recurring is that second line, under miscellaneous recurring. And that's where we, you know, fiscal 20 actual did pretty well, fiscal 23 did pretty well, but it is, you can see, fluctuating. And those could be, any receipts, they could be old checks, they could be prior year checks, they could be, I know the school does submit some, I think it was, there was certain, I know, I think it was homeless transportation could come in through that way, but there's others that now have their own funds, so those don't all come in through there, but those type of receipts would come through that fund as well. And, you know, those vary from year to year as well, we don't know what they'll be, or if you'll have any.
And so, I think it's similar to Todd's question before, just from what you've given us, the lowest year on there was 134,000. Explain to me again why we're budgeting 20,000.
We don't budget, well, there's, because there's no budget there for 25.
Sorry.
Yeah, because it's non-recurring by nature, so we can't, there's nothing...
You can't depend on it.
We can't depend, right. So you can't say, you can't look at it and say, oh, I expect to get this every year, because it's by its nature, it's a one-time, non-recurring item.
Could that be our auctions that we've been having, things like that?
The auctions have a different, that's, that's not in a budgeted revenue section, this is all the budgeted revenues. And under local receipts, there would be a line for tax, I think it's tax receipts, there's a specific line for that, but they would come into this, but we can't budget for that either, because that's not known. But that then flows into the free cash, which we can use for capital items.
I just wonder, like, I know you guys are good about earmarking certain things, and I'm sure you take into effect that it comes originally from the school, kind of giving away what was invested in the schools before, that we can try to reinvest it again.
I think that's fair, but I don't necessarily want to look at it as a one-for-one. You know, I have a department that, or we have a department in the county that doesn't turn over money, and they say, can we sell this and keep the money? I said, well, you do get capital, I mean, it's, so it's not always one-for-one.
Right. Sometimes it's, you know, you get a small amount, and we will invest, you know, 500 times more.
We'll give you more, yeah. It's not, we're not going to hold you to that amount, or, you know, some years will be better, some years will be under, but we're always going to try to meet the needs that we can within the capital plan, regardless of who turns over what.
Right.
Could I ask a clarifying question? So from fiscal year 23 on the non-recurring, you went from 314,000 to, this is actual, I'm assuming FY '24, to 20,000?
No, '24 is still budgeted, because we're still in '24, so we don't have an actual yet. So that's actually a budgeted amount there.
So do you anticipate, because, I mean, just to, I guess, to Todd and Cory's point, I mean, you have concrete data here, that from FY '20 all the way up to '23, that there's a pretty significant amount of change there.
There is, but it varies every year. So there's nothing you can point to say, we... So there's nothing you can point to say, we expect this revenue to come in next year, because it's all, you know, we don't know what prior year.
Right, but can't you just earmark a number that's a little bit closer to that than zero? Because doesn't that make the overall budget look significantly off at some level?
No, it's actually good to have, it's actually good to have, we want to have some receipts come in that we're not budgeting for, because we could have a year where motor vehicle comes in lower. And we need to be able to set the tax rate, so we have to have some, give some flexibility there. And that's the one line we really have some flexibility in. I mean, there's other lines there that we have to be careful with, and, you know, we're budgeting conservatively, because we don't know which way, you know, investment income jumped up in '23, but I don't expect it to, I expect that to be an anomaly. It was really low for a couple of years, so we were careful with some of those revenues. But items like miscellaneous non-recurring, by its nature, non-recurring, and we do need to have a buffer in there in case another one comes in unexpectedly low, so. So the next sheet, the allowance for payments exemptions, I didn't mention it, I talked about this a little bit more, and also there's overlay. This is actually a schedule from where we set our tax rate, so it's within the recapitulation sheet.
Say it again, Kate.
Yeah, we call it recap for short. And this is showing that, I know it's hard to read, and I apologize for that, it's just kind of a little, you know, snippet. But what they have us do is they give us our overlay balance, and then, and then what we're putting in, and then what the balance is available, but they continue and they go down, and they go, they want you to show the abatement and exemptions usage, it says grant if you're, but that's effectively our usage. So for each of the years, 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, they average that out, and they want to make sure we're putting in at least the 243,080 and seventy cents. And that average can change based on, you know, so next, so when we go to set the tax rate, fiscal 19 will drop off, and we'll have fiscal 24, what do we use in fiscal 24? So that was what I had mentioned before, it just kind of shows you what the state is looking for from us. And then I just wanted to point out, you know, I mentioned that earlier, that we can get, we can rely on Proposition 2 and 1/2 and a loan after the figure of new growth, and so, you know, close to a million dollars that we can start out the budget with, and pass that around to the departments that need it. But this is, this last slide here is showing, historically, this is just budgeted revenues. Now, this is an actual, this one is budgeted. So I took the budget book that, you know, we had a town meeting from year to year, and looked at, how did one year look from the last, the previous budgeted year? So, you know, how did fiscal 20 look? How much did we increase the revenues from fiscal 20 versus fiscal 19 as we're going through and putting the budget forward? And you can see, that was 862,000. And then fiscal 21 was a little more, fiscal 22 dipped, fiscal 23 went up, fiscal 24 is a little higher. A lot of that is absorbing the new growth figures, so the changes in levy capacity, and that's gonna have some shifts there. But I just wanted to show you, so historically, how, that's where our new revenues have been budgeted. So.
So just back to the allowance for payments.
Yes.
Again, I guess I thank you for the slide, I just need to clarify a couple things, just from my own knowledge. So it sounded like for FY '24, we had 250,000 in there. But based on the motion that we made on the floor.
Right.
It's how I'm meaning we got to take some money out of that.
Right.
Offset. Where does the rest of that money go for the remainder of the year? Is it used for, is it like a?
So the overlay is a, it's a.
Free cash?
No, it's a contra asset account, so it sits on our books as a contra asset.
That rolls over?
It rolls year to year, yes.
And what did, did you say the state expects us to have a certain number?
They want us to put in, yeah, so where I highlighted it, the overlay balance needed, and that is an average of the five prior year usage, is the 243,060 and seventy cents. So just wanted to show you, that's where we develop, we know that the state is asking us to put that away.
So how did we handle it this year when we didn't have that?
We didn't have it budgetarily. But as we go forward into the sheet, any other factors that, say if we have in the local receipts that I explained, so if something, say motor vehicle comes in higher than we expected, we can use that to balance it out, to make sure that we can meet the state's needs. But it is all a balancing act that.
What if you don't meet it, what does the state do?
We wouldn't be able to set our tax rate. We'd probably have to go to a special town meeting, call a special town meeting, and we'd have to go back and reappropriate budgets, probably reduce budgets, if we couldn't make our, yeah, if we couldn't set the tax rate.
So the answer is you can't not meet the state's.
Well, that'd be very, yeah, we wouldn't want to be on.
But you can move money to.
To the overlay?
Yeah.
Only at this, only here, only as we're setting the tax rate.
No, right, but I'm saying it's supposed to be before you're setting the tax rate, you can move money over to it to get to where you need to get to, like from free cash.
It's a balancing act, but.
Right.
Yes.
But that's balancing, right?
It's possible, yes. If something comes in higher on the local receipt side, then.
Right.
It's a matter of making sure that you have levy capacity so that you can set the tax rate.
Right. But there's, most likely, you're gonna be able to get to it unless, unless that number gets decimated.
Yeah.
Right? Unless it just totally gets wiped out. Thank you.
So is it, moving simple on this, last year when we hastily increased that in town, that money came out of here?
That money goes.
That money that.
No, we, right, so when you're taking, when we're looking at the budget, yes, that's where we pulled some of it from to balance it. But then when we go to set the tax rate, because you're doing that now in May, and then we go by October, we have the final figures of what we've received in local receipts, and there's more balancing that we can do to make sure we, but that's why it's important to make sure that there is, it's a whole balancing act. So everything I've explained up to this point is important, so that we can get that point and be able to set the tax rate when some anomaly like that happens. And it was definitely one of the tighter tax rate setting years.
And so then, back on the budget revenue.
Yes.
The budget number you're using for FY '25, is that the 900,000, whatever it was in the beginning, that was available for revenues?
That is just, that's just what we started with. So we have the, you know, the new state aid figures, which you can see on the state aid slide. So there, there is more right now with the government budget. So, I'll just say initially, it wasn't looking good. It was, it was, you know, it made me a little sick to my stomach. So, you know, because we were getting figures coming in from, so the employee benefits line is one of the, the second biggest budget we have after the school. So employee benefits is health insurance, which is both town and school. It is the Medicare tax, which the town has to pay on for every estimate, everyone's Medicare earnings. So there's that budget. Unemployment, which has been increasing, it's a Worcester County Retirement Assessment, and then the regular town insurances, which the school also shares as well, and they also share in part of the Worcester County Retirement, she can have focus that. So, that budget was going up by, right now, 715,000. So when we're looking at, you know, about a million, let's say round numbers, a million, and we have one budget going up by 700,000, is putting a lot of stress on every other department, including, of course, the schools, and, yeah, that's.
Is the main driver the healthcare?
Yeah, health insurance, it was, health insurance initially came in even higher than this, so it was gonna look like, it was gonna take up all the capacity we have. Let's come down a bit, but we also, Worcester County Retirement keeps going up, unemployment keeps going up, insurances keep going up, because, you know, values have gone up, and with our buildings.
Well, it's all up, and it's, it's a cycle. We just, I think, if I may.
Well, I was just gonna say one more thing, as salaries go up, the Medicare tax, and that goes up every year. So the more people we hire, and as salaries increase, that increases every year as well, so.
Sorry if I missed the chair, this is just the school portion of indirect cost. So when we talk about the insurance, employee benefits, all that, you know, the second largest budget of the town, this is just the school's natural. Just to give you a history, so you can see the escalation of how these are.
60% of what the town.
As far as this.
Thinking about.
I don't know if the percentage dropped off in my head, of how much the school makes up of indirect cost. And the second handout I have.
I think I heard why.
Oh, excuse me.
60,000.
Of health insurance. The second handout is just a few different scenarios of when staff is added, say on the school side, of what the potential could be for that budget to go up. These is, sometimes people don't take health insurance, everybody's different, there's all different, so it's very hard to predict, just through the chair.
I'm gonna let Tara and Kristen go home to their families, I don't think we're gonna have any curriculum or special.
Keith, before I let them go, we brought them in case you had specific questions on the needs.
No, I think from the very beginning, when I had talked, I talked about trying to express on the revenue side, you know, not taking issue with anything that you're deciding within your own budget.
Just want to make sure. We'll let them go home. Thank you.
The hockey club is a good educational experience.
Runs the hells, ladies, runs the hells. They are, they are amazing moms as well.
You know what Thursday night is? It's people like me. I'm running real late, and my partner's waiting.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, Justin.
So just, this is just a couple different scenarios. Again, everybody's different, not everybody takes the health insurance, sometimes they opt out, there's still a cost of that, maybe 4,400, 2,200, depending on what plan they're opting out of. And of course, Medicare is 1.45%, that's contingent on the salary, how much that's gonna be, because everything's relative, right? $90,000 salary, 1.5% is gonna be much higher than, you know, somebody at 62,000, somebody on the far side of this sheet. But just, again, to give a visual representation of how things work, that it's not that, whenever a body is added, there's additional costs that you might not know about. I mean, I think it's pretty easy.
So, Justin, to that point, you know, a lot of towns have reassessed what they're giving as a percentage that they're paying for these benefits, and then the employees have to pick up more. So, when was the last time we reassessed and recalculated, you know, what we're charging employees? So, like reimbursing and not? Like, what is the cost share?
As far as the split between how much the town picks up?
2013.
2013. Might I say it was about the last time it was looked at?
And then 2013?
13 or 15.
That was a long time.
Well, it was, but it was.
That's off the top of my head. It was around that time.
So what is. It was a split there, so employees earlier had a 20-80 split.
Wow.
And then employees later, 25, 75.
So most towns are not so generous anymore, and we're, I would say, kind of out in the ballpark of what most communities are now doing. This, this seems very generous.
I think, I wouldn't necessarily say that, no, actually. When the state tried to do the change for 75, 25, there was a lot of uproar through municipalities, and I remember that, that was during the two back-to-back recessions. However, we also had a different type of insurance plan, that actually we were forced to get off of, because they weren't making any money supposedly with municipal side government, and they only chose to go forward and insure private side. And so, you know, we have our insurance advisory committee, and, you know, we had school representation, we had labor, all that, and we're in a group now that we're, we're just starting to try to feel how this is gonna go. At least looked like the first year was pretty equal, almost like a shift over, we were still getting that kind of benefit. And then they came and they kind of gave us our insurance premiums, and that's where we all, you know, took a deep breath and said, I gotta call Mike right now, and see where he's at with his budget right now, because we were all, you know, and we still don't know, you know, based on some of these things. And I, you know, I'm heartened to be able to say that, you know, the governor, when I met with Mike, another reason why I called him is on the weekend, right before I happened to come over, is that we had a press release that came out from the governor's office that basically said she was doing clawbacks for this fiscal year, because the revenue collections weren't coming in, to the tune of almost 800 million, and she was gonna cut by something like 350 million. And she did, she made nine-seed cuts. And her budget, when she did finally release it, you know, it really opens up with the caveat that, yes, we're financially stable, and I feel the same way here. But, you know, we're on those, that ground where if you do the wrong thing, you can destabilize very quickly. And I don't want to be in that position, and she said the same thing, it's a belt-tightening year. Yet I still think, when you look at what she proposed, that there is, you know, opportunity for, you know, seeing some assistance come in, it's just that, not knowing that. Is that assistance because your school numbers went up? Or is it because we're getting reclassified with, you know, a school foundation formula that is looking at our ELL numbers, or looking at our low-income numbers, you know, all of those things that I would look at as well, you know, as a school committee member? So I'm tuned into that, but I don't know if it's gonna continue. And that's part of what we have to see through the next couple months. I don't know where we're gonna land. And, and it's always, you know, it's always good if we can, you know, get balanced, and we can provide for, you know, the majority of the needs that all the departments have, and then, you know, take a breath and say, okay, you know, sometimes the state won't even finalize its budget in July. And so, you know, the last thing we want to have is an unbalanced budget, and then we walk into July 1 with a 112 budget, because, you know, we were too high, we were too low, or we raided Peter to pay Paul, just, none of that is healthy for any of us, you know. So, so it, I'm getting a little bit more optimistic than when I met with Mike, but I'm still not optimistic enough, because we still have unknowns. I wish, you know, I wish we could put them in our hand and in our buckets of where we have to, you know, put our, our revenues, we just, I'm just not quite there yet. And that's why, you know, the timing of this was kind of important, and the timing of when you make your decision, and regardless of what the decision the school board makes, it's still gonna take all of that and say, okay, you know, how are we gonna take whatever we know, to the best of our knowledge that we have, and recognize that whatever the proposed budget comes out, is that, it's trying to balance it all. Regardless of how important every single need is, it's, you know, it's gonna be defined by, no different than if I go home and I really need a new roof, and I have to figure out how am I gonna pay for it? And that's, that's, it's not an envious position, you know, it's an easy position to be, to be in a difficult position, because you want to, you want to be helpful to everybody. You want to raise all, lift all boats with a tie, and it's just, we're constrained by 2.5, you know, I wish people would see that, you know, we've been constrained by state aid, and maybe this is a year because we have more stu-, I don't know, I don't really look at that number, because.
It is, because our enrollment's increased. It's one of the few towns in the state where enrollment has increased by 43 students significantly. It is, I talked to Desi again today to confirm it.
Good.
So it's that, we have low-income students, we have ELL students, the state has recognized by giving us, we gave this packet to the school committee with 3% anticipated increase to chapter 70, and instead we got an 11.5%. So that's a significant, it's a million dollars. It's a lot. But the state has also recognized that our kids need the help, and that we have an increase in that, in that. So that's part of what they told me as well, so, yeah.
I think it's great that the state's recognizing finally the needs that we have. And I think most communities, when they see the needs, and we are a high-needs district, that above net school spending, the community also gives more. And we have been historically one of the most underfunded, not necessarily giving, well, I'm talking, I'm talking about percentages above net school spending, where it's the additional revenue. I'm not talking about like you're doing your share from, you know, obviously there's little pieces that everybody has to give, but above and beyond, you know, and when we go back to FY '20 and some other years where, you know, when we take hits and we're like deconstructing our budget, so we can kind of play in the sandbox with everybody, it affects what we were talking about before, having the, help me out, the, when we have to cop people in RIFTA, when we have to pay the unemployment costs. Things like that have like a ripple effect that affect the town more. And then when we try to get back people, right now, for example, high-quality teachers, we don't have the teacher base that we had before. We have lost people that were really effective with our students, and really were able to teach them properly. But every time we kind of let people go, or take a cut and restructure our budget, because we're trying to be leaner, if we let somebody out of the district that walks away, they're not walking back. And we can't, I think Mike can speak to this, we can't really attract the best here very easily. And we have let way too many people go, that we have seen good things, that they're bringing to the table and. And we have let way too many people go that we have seen good things that they're bringing to the table and helping our students. But once they walk out of here, you know, it could take five years to get, when we get the next person in here, to just get up to speed to actually educate our kids appropriately. So I get really, really concerned every year when we're like, we're kind of like playing the game and we're kind of on the wire. Okay, we're gonna cut this and we're gonna cut that, you know, this person's gonna walk out and maybe we'll get somebody good enough to come back in. But even if we get somebody to come back in that might even be qualified, it takes them a while to get up to speed with how to deliver instruction to our students. And they lose an opportunity to learn. So I feel like, you know, we're not, I don't even feel like our budget's really a level service budget where we, what we were giving to our students this year again. And we're cutting things that we had in place, and every time we keep doing that, we're eroding away from the good things that we're creating. You know, we keep trying to get traction. We keep trying to move forward. And I think that's what's the hardest for us as members of this committee. And I know you guys.
It is frustrating because the money is just not there.
I get it.
And it's frustrating, I think, on both sides. And I, and I understand that too. And I don't know what, you know, I don't think the state's gonna give us a million dollars every year.
No, but it's not, it's above the state. So I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not saying what the state's gonna give us.
I'm saying like what, what our community's gonna invest more.
So, so, so just so you know, because I know some people have been on the committee for a long time, and they withstood, I think, a paucity era where, you know, things were not really forthcoming, and I understood that. And we did a lot of restructuring, Katie and I, when we came in. And if you go back to two thousand eighteen and you look at your net school spending requirement and then the next, net, the net school spending budget that we did actually, you know, back then, we were, you know, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, or four hundred and seventy thousand, let's say, above. The year that we actually started and restructured that first year, one point five million. The next year in twenty, one point eight million. I'm talking about cheap, by the way. You can get it, yes.
Well, I'm like, I asked for.
And so fiscal year twenty-one, one point two million. Fiscal year twenty-two, one point six million. Fiscal year twenty-three, one point eight million. And fiscal year twenty-four, two million above. So that's not, for a community that is considered to be an affordable community, one of the most affordable communities, that's why people move here. If you look at the type of values we have in our housing, you'll see, we're not, we don't have million-dollar houses. We're not in Sudbury, Southborough, where we have those huge, you know, mega mansions. We have regular houses, you know, selling for three hundred thousand and over and over and over again. So I, I commend, I have to, I commend everybody, every department head, every committee board, the financial team, because we have done that. And I think what we get to is sometimes it isn't just about money. It becomes about everything that you get hit with. You know, we got hit by pandemic, and yes, everybody was clawing out. The federal government was awesome, awesome with the money they, they really, you know, fueled into school districts and everything. Was it the answer in a quick solution? No, but we, we recognize that. I mean, you're all educators. I mean, I have a PhD in education too, and it's not always about that. Sometimes it's really about, you know, the way that we, we actually do the curriculum, the way we test kids, the way we do all of that. And I don't have an answer to all of that. I just know that the commitment level has been here. I want it to be here. I want it to continue. But I absolutely cannot just say yes every time that it's about the money when sometimes it isn't. And also potentially, you know, we have to be able to make sure it's sustainable. So whatever we give you, you know, this year, it's gotta be able to be sustained the next year. That's the only thing that's bad about ESAR and, you know, all of that stuff that came in, is it got us thinking that, okay, and the federal government kept saying, this is one-time money, you know, you can't, you know, you know. But then the state had to kind of come in. And sometimes the state got money and was kind of fueling it back to us too. And, but then, you know, pulled it out from under us the minute, you know, the pandemic looked like it was waning. So, you know, now with the millionaire's tax, we don't even know how that's being parsed out. It really isn't yet. That's why I really wanted to look at the numbers of where they're coming up with this, you know, blip up. But it's really about school enrollment and probably the school choice numbers and some of the special kids that have moved into the district. So I'm still waiting for the legislature to figure out where's that money gonna go? Because it's supposed to predominantly go to education and infrastructure. So they haven't done it yet. So I'm hoping maybe in the future it will get more.
I think it's more to your notes than us.
If I, just to give a little perspective to what I think Powell was trying to say, because I did crunch some numbers over the last week. Desi has a dark tool. I don't know if you've ever seen a dark tool. So they put what they call our similar cohorts, compare our scores, compare our finances and all that. And when you look at the actual net school spending as a percentage above foundation, right? So we have to spend the foundation number.
Right.
And everybody spends, hopefully everybody spends above that foundation number. In our cohort, there's the eleven schools that they put in our cohort, we are the lowest.
Yeah.
So we're, we're a hundred and eleven percent. So a hundred percent of foundation plus eleven percent over. And the average, the other ten districts is twelve point five percent higher than what we're spending. So in, and I'm not blaming anybody. I think, as you were talking to Jen, this is a historical thing that we're trying to dig out of. I think, I think you guys have done a good job helping support us to dig out of that. Because this goes back, and Powell will tell you, because she tells me all the time, this goes back.
I tell everybody.
Fifteen years. That this problem started. But that's, that's part of what we're looking to, as, as a school committee, saying, when we look at our, our companions, they're spending more above their foundation than we are.
Yeah. I, I don't know what that particular is. I've known what we budgeted, what we have budgeted and what our requirement was and looking at that.
And I think we need our requirement.
No, we, you know, you need our requirement.
No, I'm saying, but we're above that. That's what I just wanna make sure of. So.
I can see it.
But some people are like.
I've talked to Dave before.
Yeah. But some communities are like two hundred percent above.
Right.
And then we're talking about those like several.
But we're looking at light communities.
I know.
Light communities. We're not going two hundred.
No, I know. But I'm just saying, like, if you really wanna talk about like what people do and can go above and beyond and really are extravagant, there's extravagant, and then there's very, very conservative. And we're on the very, very conservative side of it.
And I just wanted to jump because I mean, you were hitting a lot of what I was gonna go back. But, you know, I certainly commend you and your leadership for providing more. I think compared to what Cory just, the data that Cory just showed you is really what an awful, awful time we had to deal with. I mean, if you, and again, respectfully, you guys feel like you have given us more, and you have.
No, the whole town.
Yeah.
The whole town. We didn't have money in reserves. I'm telling you, I think I was shocked.
Above that spending. But above that and above net spending, even though from your, from your perspective, and I respect that, you feel like you've given us a lot, and you have, but we're still at the bottom of our cohort. That being said, this was, this was the point I wanted to make earlier. I was a principal at the time, wasn't on the committee. We were decimated. We were decimated. We were losing people every year, multiple people. And what's happened is we've been trying to dig out of that year to year, and we, the funding wasn't there. And then if you watched any school committee meetings over the last couple of years, and I said clearly multiple times, the ESAR money's nice. It was able to get us back to, and moving in a direction where we wanted to go, but it's not gonna be sustainable. And what we have tried to do the last couple of years as a committee is to build back into the budget some of those positions that we lost a long time ago. And I, and I appreciate this, this graphic because it gives you a nice view of, of what it's gonna take to bring new people in. But we are still digging out of a tremendous hole, and every year that we can't add a few pieces sets us back. So I mean, I, that, that right there tells it all. I mean, again, we appreciate what you've done, but it just goes to show how underfunded we were for years and years.
Well, there are communities that pass operational overrides, folks. And that's, that doesn't necessarily, I don't know if it breaks apart because once it's actually incorporated, then, then they actually spend it, you know, so.
Did we not do that?
No.
Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't it like two thousand eighteen or something?
I think we tried.
We did with fire.
I, no, no, there's no operational.
Yeah, we don't have any overrides right now.
No, but I thought we did at one point try.
We tried.
We might have tried, yeah, tried.
And it might have not passed. But I think we tried to go into it with like fire.
Tried to go into it and get everybody involved.
So that, and that, that becomes one of those things. If, if a community is looking beyond proposition two and a half for sustainability, you either have to have that coming in revenue-wise, or you have to go beyond that. And that's what happens to communities that constrained like that. You know, Sutton was a community that got constrained like that during the two back-to-back recessions, and they recognized that they just didn't have it, and they did, you know, an operational override to try to benefit the schools and, and the municipality. And so, so there may be, and I don't know which ones they are, but that could be what you're also seeing play out for communities that are restrained like that, you know? And if they just don't have the growth and they don't have the ability to do that, then you have to, I mean, it speaks to, you know, convincing the public, you know, that, you know, that investment, their return on the investment is gonna see test scores go up. It's gonna see, you know, the ability to bring in higher academic standards. And, you know, that's what you, you have to convince the public of those things too. It's different than just convincing the operational budget that's constrained by a certain amount of revenue that it can dish up and, and dish out, you know? And, and it isn't wishes. I mean, you can't tell a police chief or a fire chief that, that they have a wish, they have needs. And same thing with, you know, a town clerk who has to make sure that she can execute an election because it's the most important thing to, to, to a town in being able to assure that its democratic processes are working. I mean, it's true. I mean, there are, and if I look at the needs of that department, that has skyrocketed since we do mail-in voting. It just isn't, you know, helpful anymore just to have, you know, one clerk and an assistant clerk, not in election years. And you can't just bring people on that have never done that because the, you know, the process itself is so involved. And if you don't have the experience, you place jeopardy, you know, in tainting the process. So it's just using all these different kinds of experiences that we have. And so, you know, that becomes the next thing, you know? And if that is something that, and that's why it's important to have these discussions now.
Even, even not, I just wanna make the point that like right this year where you're looking at a million dollars extra in state aid, we can't expect a million dollars next year. Like, that's a one-time bump. An override would be a one-time bump too. So then it's.
Right. But we can't, we can't expect that they're not gonna decrease us significantly because our enrollments are increasing.
That's great.
So we can use that, we can use that money for our schools.
You expect it to be level though going forward?
Correct. Typically goes up two to three percent a year. Correct.
Right, right.
This year they recognized our enrollment increases, so it's gone up significantly.
But my point about the override is that, again, you know, if, if that's what were to happen in the community, voted for that to go forward, it's another one-time bump. So it's still, sustainability still comes into question. I mean, you have to make sure all the changes are sustainable within, you know, the revenues that are gonna be coming in going forward because it's like that's one-time bump. So even though it's there every year, you've already, you've already placed it in your budget, it's already used.
I think I'm a little sidetracked because I don't think anybody was pitching it over.
No, you would have heard, you would have heard it from me already. Trust me, and I think you know that. But I think the most important thing here is, we, like you've said it very, very well and eloquently, the cost of doing business is going up. The cost of doing business has also gone up exponentially for us. Education is not cheap. And we have kids, as I think everybody in this community knows, our kids are not making academic gains the way that they should be. It's not that we're not putting forth like all our ammunition and all our effort to make sure that these things happen for our kids. We're giving it the best that we particularly have. But again, like I said before, when people come into the trenches and they don't know what they're necessarily doing because we're not getting the most highly-qualified educators because they're not fully certified in all different things, and those are the only people that are applying here, if we cut something and that position goes out the door, then we are at a loss, our kids are at a loss, and pretty soon families are gonna move out of this district. I have concerns that that's slowly gonna start happening. Mike has worked so hard to really, really make people feel excellent about what's happening here. We're trying really hard to put the best people forth. But I know we know that we need to not take a step backwards. And, and I feel bad that we keep asking, but in comparison to other communities, what we're asking for is not much. And I hear what you're saying, we just don't maybe necessarily have it in the coffers to be able to put forth to the schools. I get that. But then that puts us at a, I guess, at a moral dilemma. Then what are we gonna do? Like, I guess we really need to think about that next year. If we're really coming to that realization right here tonight at the stable, then we really need to have a game plan that we have to do something where we have to fix this so we can, we can sustain our budget and not have to have this regression year and.
Right. So, so I think a good thing then, some people don't think of it, because the budget for the school is so big. When we say three point, let's say we say, you know, two, you know, two and a half, and we ask you to do two and a half and you budget that. And, you know, you come out with, you know, let's just say three percent is like about five hundred thousand. When you go up incrementally to three point eight percent, you know, now you're getting closer to a million dollars, right? If I say to the police department who might have a, a budget of three million, you know, and I do that three percent and the three point eight percent, it's, it's, that impact is nowhere near. It's, it's significant to them because, you know, it could be thirty thousand, forty thousand for a three percent, and you're, you're sitting there saying, okay, well, that's a half-time of an officer or it's a, or it's a dispatcher that's part-time, whatever that may be. But the reason why that number is so big, when you start talking about a budget so big, is that it trips way beyond the two and a half percent when we're trying to rein it in. And that's why I say, if, if that's the realization going forward, it won't be sustainable unless we had some big, you know, revenue source that we could count on. And, you know, we, we don't have that right now. And that's what I'm trying to, to figure out how we can go forward. And that's why there are communities that get to that point, and the, in the, in the, you know, school board, you know, understands that point, and the administration does, and then you have to say, we won't be able to provide anything going forward to other departments. And, you know, you don't wanna tell a chief that. You don't wanna tell, and you're just like you don't wanna tell a superintendent that. So that's gonna be that kind of meaningful discussion that we're gonna have to have. It isn't like, guess what? I know what happened last year, and we try to do it again this year. We might be able to with this blip up. But again, financial management teams, we can't rely on those one-time things because it may not be there. And then you'll be, right. It's just like the federal government, handed out like candy. And now, you know, took it back and everyone's got relying on it, and you're like, okay, but where's it coming from? You know? So go ahead.
And I totally respect and understand sustainability. And I totally respect, you know, what you do and your numbers person, if you look at it from that. I'm a principal. And when that money's there and there are needs, we gotta fill those needs. And then we can worry about sustainability after. I hate to be blunt. I know you don't wanna hear.
And then you get, then Paulie was.
I can tell you fifteen things that I had to do today.
We're all gonna work.
That saddened me that we can't provide these services for kids. So again, that being said, if that, if we are a million dollars more than we projected, to me, we have to be able to build in some supports for our kids. Nineteen, twenty eighteen, those numbers that we were getting then, a kid today, a kid today in twenty twenty-four compared to twenty eighteen is drastically different. The needs, the, the things that we have to provide with limited, limited resources, I'm telling you again, from a principal's perspective, who has to deal, who manages the whole building, in one building, if the money is there, we hire what we need and we worry about sustainability after. I'm just gonna be blunt.
It's because those kids don't get a dole, right?
Because if they miss one year, exactly, they don't get a dole. There was just, let's say, great damage that happened with kids from the COVID, right? And we're still trying to catch up. And it, it was projected three, four, five years out is really where we're gonna see it. And we're starting to see that now.
I don't think Oxford is unique in that situation. I think.
No, Dave's not in Oxford.
Right, well, no, no, I know that. I mean, I think they're mine.
We're fairly in, in every district down here. So it seems to be there's, there's just an overall sustainability problem with the whole structure of.
It's a funding problem. It's always been a funding problem. Justin, so we don't have any questions later that we can think of right now. Can you just go over these sheets that you handed out with us? You showed us this one already. This one you handed out for, for reasons.
Certainly. So this is just the past three years of actual expenditures for indirect costs for the, for the school. General administrative service, and, oh, do you want me to go through each category? Just kind of, yeah, with reexplanation, yeah. So general administrative services, that's payroll, the cost of your payroll, the cost for any administrative services that the, that the town provides, such as audits, those types of things. Operation and maintenance of school, and please stop me at the other.
I was just gonna say, so all these things are assessed against our budget, so like.
No.
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 Well, indirect costs, right?
No.
Or if you're wrong.
It's not now, we don't. There are districts that do do that.
Okay, I'm, this is why I'm asking, to see clarification.
This was one item.
They count towards, some things count towards net school spending, some are not supposed to.
So this counts towards net su-, with the exception of the short-term debt, all the debt. The debt does not count towards, uh.
Net school spending.
Correct. Then, and I believe transportation, but transportation's in your budget. You wouldn't see it on there.
And this is put together every year as the business managers, I mean, there's end-of-year reports. I divide the figures to the business manager and he puts it through within his year-end report.
Yeah. So previously, what was, what happened was, before the budget was set, these indirect costs were budgeted. So that was taken right off the top before the school budget was set. We, the manager had changed that a few years ago. He said, you know what? We can, we'll still report them, the. He said, you know what, we can still, we'll still report them, the actuals, after the fact, but we're not going to penalize the district on unknowns, you know what I mean? Like, we're not going to estimate your health insurance. And then, well, jeez, it comes in a little bit lower, and that money was kind of left on the table. That was kind of the problem that was happening. So again, we reported afterwards. But these are real costs.
Yeah, I guess where I really struggle with this is other communities have, have made some blunders in this particular area, and I'll be honest with you. It's not necessarily, I don't have clear understanding of exactly what our indirect costs are and how they're impacting our budget. But I know that I feel like it is detracting from the net school spending in some, in some years in the past. Maybe it's not anymore, and things have happened in the past. And like, I look at this operation maintenance of school grounds, like this, this dollar figure, historically, I remember it being significantly lower. And it seems like it has grown. So like, when the town's taking more extra money to us above and beyond net school spending, right? But the indirect costs go up maybe proportionately.
They do.
Yeah, so.
That because of costs, yeah.
I know, but then the problem is, it's like, are we really giving what we say we're giving to our kids? Because we're still taking education per se to pay for these other things that have to be covered. I get that. But then it's not going to educating the students. It's not the dollars that are affecting them in the classroom per se. For staff and resources, it's.
A lot of them are covered. They're fixed cost, like, they're not going to go, there's not really a way to eliminate them.
In some respects, though, like operations, maintenance, school grounds, facilities, different things, we had a different way. We were, back in the day, the school department handled all that money. And we hired, we hired our own people, and we had our own things, and you lived it, and God bless you. And I know that was extra, maybe you were still living it. I don't know, maybe it was before your tenure.
It was before my tenure, but I, I lived it just on a different office.
You lived it on a different, on a different thing. And I mean, I don't know, there's part of me that feels like sometimes maybe it's better for the district to be able to do that, but maybe it's not because of the overhead of having certain people. But that's a large.
Well, remember, it allows, it allowed us to also build capacity into your budget that wasn't there before. So if that's not going towards programming, when it used to go towards, you know, mowing athletic fields and, you know, doing a lot of different preventative maintenance or maintenance contracts and just different things, you know, we look at that as, no, that was real dollars for the superintendent to spend, you know, on staffing and on program development. You know, that does get translated in that way. But it's not like it's not, you know, also in the larger budget, you know. And that's why, that's why you'll see me constantly trying to chase, you know, different kinds of revenues down because it's important, because it allows us to continue to have the flexibility. It's not, it's not easy overall to find the balance, but it definitely, you know, has changed, and it should be looked at that. And I would think that that was a, you know, a positive thing for the district. And I know that the previous two superintendents felt it was extremely positive. And then you walking in, I mean, you came from a different district, so it's all relative to what other districts may or may not be doing, you know.
No, I think it's a great relationship. I think it works great. DPW does a phenomenal job. Check the back and grounds and everything else. It's a good relationship.
And the share, you know, when we say, you know, there are districts that share that cost. And that's a different thing, where, you know, they don't assume all of it, but they assume a good portion of it, but yet it gets managed by the town. There's a lot of districts that have done that. And that's, that's a whole nother piece that, you know, is being freed up for program versus, but it's still being absorbed within the entire operational budget of the town. So, you know, when you were talking about insurance and maybe changing the proportion and trying to, yeah, there's a lot of efficiency you can build into a budget, but you can also argue that we tried doing that with this portion of it, and some districts will actually make a school district pay towards that. We're not, we're not, you know, I didn't like that at the beginning, and we're trying not to do it, but that's why if you have that give and take a little bit and build in the flexibility and still try to meet the majority of the needs before we talk about the old word, you know, going forward, you know, as long as we can go that direction, you know, the longer we can do that, that's great. But I mean, if it's, if it's really, really, you know, a crucial need, and everybody has to, you know, not only support it, but you have to show that evidence, all of that kind of stuff, it's, you know, it's not to say that a community, you know, won't support that.
Can I ask a question as a committee?
Please.
Just, you know, as a student, I went through Millbury. I spent one year at Ellen.
For me, right?
Oh, yes. My point is, my point is they've restructured the school and the class, like, what grades went where. I feel like we're always being shuffled around. As a committee, have you, because, well, I just have to, because I know the finance committee is where I was up before, and I'm.
I'm a troglodyte, brother.
Yeah. No, I just, I just want to, I just want to bring it up as a, you know, because I know Hallamina is very passionate about, you know, making sure the kids get what they need. And of course, I think everyone wants that.
Right.
And to truly get that, you know, with the revenues being what they are, and yes.
I don't think we can close fill them.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, is that, no, I mean, I've seen it happen like when I was growing up. That's what they were, you know, they were closing down those extra schools, and they were combining, you know, grades. And really, this is just coming from the first perspective, and one is make sure that, you know, eventually. If you thought about it, to.
It's a fair point. I mean, I think we have to look at every viable option to save money.
And I think this coming year is a good year to.
Well, I mean, I think we have to be careful.
The counter to it is the enrollment's going up. So if enrollment was going the other way, then I think you would have the capacity to look deeper. But I mean, certainly something that we talk about and book out. I mean, I even brought up regionalization before.
Well, that's another one of my.
But the problem is somewhere.
And that's just a whole other, you know, headache and problems and, you know.
But some of our classes.
I work in a regional house, so it's different.
Some of our class sizes, though, right? We have 26 to 27, 30 kids in a class. Those classes.
Well, you wouldn't want to increase those classes.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, right, we have, we have a need where we need to spread more students out, and we need to put more students in classes, classrooms with a teacher, and actually use the space that we have, right, to deliver instruction in a more ideal environment. Because we all know having class sizes of 30 is, you know, we're not necessarily using the space the way we should be using it because we are already so strapped that we're having bigger class sizes. But if we were able to staff our schools appropriately and lower, you know, class sizes, we'd be using, probably utilizing a lot more of that space because there'd be a lot more classes happening simultaneously because we have more teachers in those classrooms. Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, sure.
But right now, maybe there is like a class or two here and a classroom here or two, and we have a lot more bodies.
You all know this better, of course.
Yeah, I'm just.
To be clear, I don't think you were advocating just to cut staff and get rid of.
Only if it makes sense to you, and that's something you know about.
It made sense to you, not saying.
And I know when we just tried to put the preschool.
Much bigger discussion.
Right, yeah.
No, no, yeah.
But just when we tried to move the preschool, we realized what a space issue we had because we couldn't even really find the spot that we really wanted to necessarily have in our elementary schools, right? And even thinking about putting it in the middle school and different places, we ended up putting them where we, where we put them, and it's working out well. But I think we do have a big space problem here. And we know that they're building up, you know, a big development over there across from.
Not yet.
Well, not, but, but you just said we have to plan for the future, right? And so if we take it away, if we take it away, right? If you build it, they will come.
But listen, overall, we don't know that, you can't hide this statistic from the superintendent. Overall population in schools is going down. It's by hundreds and hundreds of. So, you know, I get it, we're going to all be faced with this, you know, because, you know, it's like wanting to do, you know, a lot of that, you know.
Sorry, Lee, do you?
I did, I, you know, I just wanted to tag on to some things that Paul made sense. So, you know, as a parent of children who have gone through this district, you know, I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot from the schools. And I completely appreciate all the numbers, everything, and I know it's, you know, as you keep saying, a balancing act, I get it. You know, we do it at home every day, right? To, to kind of build on what Paul was saying and the school sizes and what you were saying about like, you know, shrink, more kids coming into the districts are more inclusive now. Your teachers are being asked to do so much more than they ever, ever had. They have to have degrees in this and that, and how to separate the children that are all together. Maybe this child is a trigger to this child. Maybe this child has ADHD. Maybe this one has mental disabilities. A lot of them are invisible that you can't even see or know. And so I appreciate lower class sizes due to the fact that as the teachers are in there trying to teach, they can give a little extra focus to this one. And maybe your high performers can get a little extra credit, maybe peer mentor those children. So, but, you know, cutting that down, especially as our numbers are going up, is really difficult. I will say I love the fact that preschool went to the high school because it gives those children an opportunity to go to a career path and stay in district. I've seen a lot of outplacement.
This was a unique year, though, for school enrollment to go up because we weren't offering school choice in before. I don't know how many of those 45.
We have 15 school choice.
Okay.
Our first year offering.
And the other 35.
We have a lot of families moving to town. As you said, it's economically, it's affordable. So a lot of families moved in this past summer.
We also had students who returned to new programs.
Right, yeah.
That was the intention behind this program.
Whole other issue.
Keep kids from leaving, you go to fake that or.
I think I just wanted to finalize.
Fire, yeah, side with them.
Our schools are super important to the town, and I know you guys all know that. It's, the more that you can ensure that it stays state, like, stable. Yeah, and level and not dip back down, you will not lose the children and the families that are already there. The minute you start to shake it and drop it and things get pulled, the community talks. And they, and parents, right? They talk together, and then the next thing you know, you know, Jane and John, they're pulling their kids and they're going someplace else, or maybe they're settling, you know? I mean, our district is, I love my kids going through here. My kids have done well, but I know others have struggled. And it's just important, I think. If we cannot at least stay stable, we can't dip.
Well, I agree with that. Things, you know, but that goes to the sustainability and, you know, that's what we would like to have, too. So we have to kind of come to a level where we, we can keep that. We can keep it going forward and not go up or down.
But I mean, stable, like, in terms of like even as other things go up. Like, everything goes up, right? But look at gas prices, they go up and they go down, right? You have to give salary increases, so like, stable in terms of like, what is the right stable?
Right, and that's why this committee every year should just put forth a level service budget, and we should not be making any cuts at all. And we should be trying to build a little bit, too, if we can. But unfortunately, we're looking at making cuts. And that's really, it's just really painful.
Yeah, because I can certainly understand, and I love the passion that you have. I wish we could just grow a money tree.
Just to be clear, when you talk about being cut, you're talking about not fulfilling somebody, funding the S position. We're not, we're not looking at cutting anybody, I don't know.
Oh, right.
You want that word, you mean? We are, you're correct. We have resources right now that we will not have next year based on what we're proposing, but those are S money positions.
Right, because that grant money is going away.
Yep.
What we built back, like Mr. Canacci always said, oh, so eloquently, to actually get us to what we were at one point before Drake, Coney, and Cox came through this town and ripped us apart, we kind of got our way back. We crawled, clawed our way back, and now we're coming backwards again. And that, to Leah's point, that that's what's so hard because, but she said, so, but like, families feel that.
So I don't think we're going backwards. I think what we're having is a [inaudible]. There are decisions like we're all having to make about sustainability and what does that mean? And every single department, in every single school, and the superintendent will, you know, decide, you know, what that is and, you know, forward for their respective departments. And like I said, we have to figure out what we can, what we can do with the revenues we have. We can't make that grow on trees, no matter how much I want to really, you know, do something. We have to come up with different.
I expect it to grow trees.
Yes, I'm trying. Listen, I.
You grow good flowers, so I can take you to.
No, I also, I've done a lot more than that in this town. And I want you to know that it isn't something that happens in every community where, you know, you recognize outstanding receivables, people were not paying their taxes for years. You know, they looked at the manager saying, well, what are you going to make if people pay taxes? And say, absolutely, because I can't come here, I guarantee you, you know. And we're talking, you know, trying to bring, you know, current, you know, almost $2 million, and we still only have so much money to go around because, like you said, all the costs go up. The expectations go up. So, you know, that's phenomenal, you know, from a management standpoint to do that after it hasn't been done in 25 years, you know? And it's more like you say about what teachers do in their offices. That's why, you know, a department that's, you know, even the manager's office trying to juggle all of that, make sure we're moving accounts to being covered, you know, making new businesses come in town. That's all part of it, but it's also this part, and it's an essential part that we're limited, unfortunately. And I wish, you know, as the Commonwealth, that two and a half never really came in. But it's there, you know, when we get to that point, you know, where we have to be convincing to people that if that's what we really need, or, you know, we have to look at restructuring somehow. But, you know, this is a broader discussion, you know, even longer. Again, this was a preliminary, you know, I think very healthy for me, again, to sort of just, so everyone knows, this is not like, you know, we're trying to just fit everybody in cookie cutter, you know, budget boxes. That is not what we're doing at all. It's just the concern we have of being able to balance that, and how do we get to that proposed budget? And, you know, that's the major focus over the next four weeks, really.
Yep, no, and I appreciate the theory or the idea behind that.
Yeah, through the chair, unless there was another direction this meeting, I would just ask you, you know, flat out, a straight shoe to have, what are you looking for from us? What is the number, what's the percent? Where do you think we should be? Because I think that gives us something to look at. I mean, unless I'm out of line with this request, I think we need to know what you're looking at.
I would, I would, I would like to have a little bit more flexibility with time so that I can be more assured that, you know, the closer that, I mean, I can see where you're going, the closer that we can try to get to that without totally, you know, doing nothing for the police department, nothing to the fire department, because remember that they're integral to the school department, too, right? So if I have to level fund them and they, you know, and I've got a brand-new police chief and he's trying to, you know, so I'm just trying to, you know, find that wiggle room to be able to do that, so.
What does that look like for our proposal? What's the difference?
That's what I'm saying, I need a little bit more because we have, we still have an insurance department that has to come in, and I have to, you know, so if you don't mind, if I can talk with the superintendent, he can bring it back to you. That would be most helpful, and I know you've got an upcoming, you know, hearing to be able to decide that. So we, and we have a couple more pieces of information that still haven't come in. And that's why I thought it was important.
And I think to your question, I think a few things came in, so you and I spoke, that have changed kind of the.
So that's why.
I think it's fair to say, so just, with time, if you have.
Yeah, and which is a great.
So just to.
So we're all on the same page. We were looking at 3.8%. Is that what we ended up with?
This proposed budget based on 3% chapter 7.
And I'm certainly not going to hold you to this, but if I had to put a number where you guys are at, it's 2.5.
No, well, that's, well, to tell you honestly, that's how everybody is right now. And that's, but then we're looking at.
But you know, that won't even, that won't even touch contractual.
Yeah, I know. And by the way, you know, I'm under, I'm under negotiations right now with the police, too, right? So, you know, that's another piece of it that's, and I don't have that to be yet.
We also have transportation, and we have other unforeseen.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of.
Transportation.
There's lots of unknowns.
So we always started at two and a half. Justin, when, you know, I would talk to Justin, I always said two and a half. And I think we always end up somewhere around three, you know, with the exception of when we were looking at potential state aid cuts for the COVID. Yeah, I think we would always came like somewhere over three.
Yeah.
So what's the timeline for all this, what you mentioned, four weeks? When do we have to have the budget?
No, that's for me to actually, you know, pitch. I mean, you, you have to have your figure that comes to me, but again, then that gets, then put with all of them. And then I have to say, okay, you know, what we know now, you know, where can we, what's the maximum we can do? we can do and what can I, you know, can I do anything for anybody else?
So what's the input, what's the date you need your input from our committee?
Um, I think before you do the, the fourth, you know, hearing, that would be helpful to, to know that.
Sure.
And that's all, I mean, I just, you know-
So March 4th?
March 4th?
March, when I say 18.
March 4th is our next school committee, March 18th.
Is that when you're having your hearing?
March 18th.
March 18th.
Yeah, because I have to deliver the budget 45 days before, and so I'll try to push that out as long as I, as I can before I deliver that.
And you expect you'll have some kind of an estimate to, to make that before?
Yes, yeah, but where I think we can.
Okay.
And, and what, you know, we might not be doing on the other side, because I'm gonna have to, you know, that, just like you will have things that, you know, you really wanted and that maybe not aren't even in that 3.8% number, I have the same issue with other departments.
Yeah, and I think that's our responsibility too, to say, I think to 1000 earlier, we could use more 3.8.
More certainly.
We brought in a 3.8, but if we have to look at it, what does that look like? Not at 3.8, that's our responsibility to do that too, but-
I understand.
But I don't know if it is our responsibility to do that, because our responsibility first lies with the students in the school. So like, I think our responsibility always, and I don't mean to like shake anybody and rattle and cages, it's to advocate for what the kids need in this community. And the moment that we start to get like, oh God, are we gonna find the money? That's kind of sometimes the problem, because we, we do make these cuts or make these things that we can't build back, and then we're losing the traction, and I, and it kills me. Because I mean, like, obviously, when, when push comes to shove sometimes and it's gone up, especially for education, the money can be found, and if it has to be that we do go to the town and we ask for an override, then we have to do that, just like we went forth through the town and told them, hey, look at our buildings, they're crumbling. Everybody can plainly see it that they're crumbling, but look at our students, they're not performing. Everybody can see it on our state standards, I mean, our state assessments and other things. Those kids are not where some of the other kids are in the surrounding communities next to us, the other communities are outperforming us. So if our buildings are crumbling and our kids aren't getting where they need to do, let go, we need to invest more in them, and it, it's just very black and white to me. So I know I'm like super passionate and I know I keep going on, but I just think that we can't necessarily back ourselves into a figure, because that's just not how education works.
Right, and I agree, but we have to have a big cake for kids, but we also, as school committees, have to look at all of our options and then make a decision. So for me, you know, I'm still at the 3.8, we'll see what the town manager comes back with to the superintendent, and then we as a committee look at that and decide what we wanna do. I mean, you knew I was passionate on town floor that last year that we weren't gonna give in.
Right.
But I think we always have, we owe it to everybody, all the departments, to look, is there a way? And if there isn't, then we push forward, at least for me personally.
And I, and one other thing I want to bring up, if you don't mind.
Please.
So we're using this year in our budget, our revolving funds, right? You know how you use particularly, that's what they're proposing anyways, that our superintendent proposed to us. You talked about how you not dipping into certain funds because you have to have those contingencies, yet we're dipping into those funds now to kind of actually make balance the budget and make it work. I'm really scared that we're doing that, because I don't really think that it's, it's a good way, because we're building ourselves a financial cliff. So even at our big ask of 3.8, which seems like, it seems to be too much, how much of that is actually coming, if we look at it, from those revolving funds? And really, should we be putting that on top and not, like, if the town's gonna be protective of certain funds, maybe we should also be protective of certain funds, because we also-
It's not just protective, we can't, we can't reduce them.
Right.
They're all naturally, yeah. I know what you're saying, we don't say carry over.
I get what you're saying, we can't touch them, but like, if we know we have certain things and maybe it's a little bit more, like, we work to build that special revolving fund for contingencies, for specialized costs when they escalate, and then we could go together with, with the Board of Slaughter, Minnesota as a school and say, okay, that we need to take those funds out now because something's happening. Like, should we be thinking as a committee to try to build up certain things? Should we, you know, we're not doing that per se, right?
No.
Um, but, and now we're not doing that, and we're particularly pulling out of revolving funds too. So like, that's extra scary for me, because historically, we haven't really been doing that, and we, we've been trying to spend down those funds, because we're making, you know, we're getting that income in, for example, for our free service program, we did a great job of getting new equipment that we really poorly needed, because it was 20 something years old or more. You know what I mean? So we're-
And that makes sense for using a fund for that one-time expenditure, you know, using your fund balance, so that, that's a good use of that.
But, you know, there was talk about using funds for positions, funds for, you know, certain things.
Yeah, that's-
And that doesn't make so much sense to me.
Well, yeah, it's all about the sustainability, can you sustain it through that source?
Yeah, for the one, yeah.
Does it, the free cash, does it roll, that's not a revolving account? So you gotta spend down to zero?
You don't have to spend it down to zero, it can roll insofar as it's your fund balance, so it, it will be there if you don't spend it again, and it will get recertified by-
So then it is a revolving account?
It's not. In theory-
Revolving is-
Yes, it's not.
No, yeah, because say, say we don't have any, you know, leftover receipts or, you know, budgets didn't come in, you know, exactly where they were at, and in the end you can't reconcile that you had anything left over, then you can't count on it. See, it's always whether you can count on it.
Well, revolving fund you can't count on either.
Yeah, unless you've got something that's-
But you have money there that you can use.
You can only use it, once it's been certified by the Director of Accounts, it only through June 30th. So we were certified in September, August, September, we can only use that up through June 30th, then it expires, and you have to get recertified, so it is-
But the money doesn't go away, it still could be there, just has to get recertified.
If you haven't, if you haven't appropriated it-
Right.
-then yes, it could still be there, it just can only be spent after approval, yeah.
And, and actually, when we, where we used to be with, with our stabilization accounts and our free cash, you know, before we came, there wasn't that mechanism to try to generate that, and that's why we tried to do conservative numbers, because we'd have to be going into the taxpayers all the time for every debt exclusion, you know, capital item, because there was no money.
Well, I think, I think it seems like Oxford was hit very hard by the recession, and it seemed like from the reserves that we didn't see as we came-
Quickly.
Yes, I, I think-
Went through a lot of money.
And that's how the school got decimated too, I think, is because of the recession. It just hit really hard here. It took years and years to dig out of.
But, you know, in the end, you know, if, if, you know, if those things are really critical, if in the same way that we looked at, we couldn't just find $10 million to do the roofs and this and that, and so, you know, in speaking with Mike, you know, over a bunch of different iterations, we tried different things, we tried the MSBA, you know, we know what happened with that, the agent roof wasn't right, because they changed the, the requirements of the program and blah, blah, blah. And then, but then working with him, we were able to come up with, you know, an understanding of the, the best time to try to pass, you know, the debt exclusion, working with our office to do all of that. So, I mean, it's no different than going forward and trying to look at sustainability of a budget too. And I know that some people don't wanna hear that, but it really becomes, you know, advocating for the basic necessity, and you just have to be able to provide that evidence, no different than what we just did for, for, you know, major capital item. So, you know, that becomes, you know, a more critical question, and if, and if it's not this year, then, you know, and if it's just, that's what we're gonna be looking for every year, that's why I said, you know, 3.8 or 4% above and beyond the 2.5% limitation that we have, that becomes not sustainable, because the budget is so big, that's all.
Well, it's really only 1.3%. It's not 4%.
No, but every single year, you know, because you gotta build it into the budget this year, and then you ask for another 3.8% next year, and so it is actually, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's why, that's why, because we're, we're not gonna grow at that pace, unfortunately.
And then I'll try to-
Trying to save the electricity.
Yeah, I'll try to wrap it up, my last, my last comment here. I guess my last big, big comment, everybody kind of jumped. This is one district that has some programs for our special, our high need students or special ed students, but we don't have enough programs. Again, we haven't necessarily built, and that's gonna take a lot of money, and it's gonna take the rest, like, the right people, but if, if we could, if we could build a budget and know we're gonna build a certain budget above need, and we could go for an override to have certain programs and things like that, and we can service our kids in district and not necessarily have to pay 17% increases in spend tuition and things like that, and we can keep our kids in house, we could save a lot of money. And more importantly, those kids could get a better, hopefully, high-quality education here, because they would be with like peers, hopefully, because we could build the model appropriately and have the appropriate teachers and support and staff here, and they wouldn't have to be trucked away, away from their families and away from people that, you know,